All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is May tenth, twenty twenty-two, and it is six thirty P M., and we are in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present except Councilman Whitestone, who is excused. And we'll now turn the time over to Councilman Fitzmoney for our opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight I've invited a special guest to open our meeting for us tonight. And I want to introduce a very dear friend and mentor and spiritual leader, Pastor Vanetta Gulfen Wilkerson. We all know her as Pastor V from the Granger Community Christian Church. And so I've invited her to greet us tonight and offer an invocation and let us know about the great work the church is doing here in the community.
Thank you, Jane. Madam Mayor. Granger Community Christian Church was founded in West Valley, what was, well, the predecessor of West Valley. A long, a long time ago. Longer, longer ago than most of you can remember. The world around us has changed. And what we find in now is that our community has great needs. But the good thing about West Valley and the area is that we have lots of service providers who can meet those needs. We're not in a desert there for every need that we have, there are groups who can provide the sources. Our church has a program called Project Cornucopia. It was founded in twenty twelve, and basically what we do is have one place where we put them all together. So we close off our parking lot, we put up bunches of tents, and we invite as many different groups, agencies, or whatever that we can find. And we ask them to share what they have. We solicit as much free food as we can, and we put up signs that say, free, 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 free. And guess what that does? It draws people in. So we have a chance to put them together. I want to take this time to say thank you to West Valley. You all have been supportive of this project since it was an idea in my head, and people said, are you kidding? But West Valley did not say that I got a lot of support and continue to have support. West Valley Police Department, for one, they have been at every Project Cornucopia that we have done with the exception of our COVID vacancy. But we're back. Project Cornucopia is basically a giving. And so we look forward to doing that again. I would solicit your help again. There are things that we're going to need. You should have a flyer that has a list of some things that you could possibly do. If you have questions or concerns or ideas, please just give me a call. Like my brother Jake said, is just call Pastor Vanetta. There's a text phone number on your sheet. Now, originally, I was asked to do the prayer. So let me get about the business. Please, sisters and brothers, pray with me. Loving Creator of the universe, Holy One, Architect of the seasons. As we watch the seasons change and usher in springtime with this promise of new life and hope, we remember. You have created the seasons to provide a rhythm of life, and in each season, you show us reminders of your love and your grace. We are present in this place to affirm your design that we live in community and in covenant. We are gathered in this place affirming the words of the Psalmist who assures us of your constant presence in ways we can feel and recognize. Lord God, we see your signature and creation everywhere, and we are grateful. We ask of God that just as you have filled our landscape, that you would fill this place from the bottom of it to the top of it, to the edges of its perimeter. Fill it with your presence and power, that the women and men who abide herein are guided by your Holy Spirit in their daily liturgy, the work of the people. Lord God, please help those who make decisions and choices in this chamber and in these halls to demonstrate a love for you that encompasses all their hearts, minds, souls, and strength. May the results of the energy and resources invested here show forth a love for our neighbors that is as profound as the mountains and deep as the rivers and canyons of our state. Mighty God, bless and abide with each person here, so that the words spoken in the meditations of each heart will be acceptable in your sight. And finally, Lord, we ask that every official, staff person, lobbyist, and citizen who walks in these halls may know that they are beloved of the creator of the universe without exception. That all may know your love, Creator God, is real and relevant for the living of our days, as Jesus Christ would pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Any follow-up, Jake? We will now move to our minutes of May third, twenty twenty-two. Any discussion or emotion on the minutes?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Okay, and that passes. We will now have our comment period. Our comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall keep their minutes, their comments to five minutes and may only speak once. After being recognized by the mayor, please come to the mic and give us your name and address if you did not sign up on here. Please address the mayor with your comments. This is a time for you to comment and not debate with the council. And council and staff will have time to comment after the thirty minutes. We do have a public hearing tonight. So if you're here to speak during the public hearing, we'd ask that you speak then instead of during the public comment period. So our first speaker, Ms. Hawes.
Thank you, Mary. It's good. It's Mayor. It's good to see everyone here tonight. I just have three items that I'd like to speak to. First of all, the sound wall on twenty-seven hundred west. Thank you finally for getting that in place. There's a number of neighbors have been feeling very exposed about having their backyards open to the traffic that's been going through the neighborhood. Second of all, there has been an abandoned vehicle that's what basically looked like it got in an accident. It got wrecked up. It's been sitting in on the street in front of my property for probably several weeks, maybe a month now. It actually had a warning attached to the window. That warning has faded. The thermal paper has actually faded, so you can hardly read it now. I tried calling basically the code of street enforcement, and I haven't heard anything back on that. But it's, it makes it a danger to try to get out of my driveway, trying to back onto the street and get, and get out. My, the third item that I'd like to speak about is sustainability. I had a friend that showed me the sustainability page for the city of West Valley City, and I love everything that's going on. I especially love the sustainable, the idea of sustainable zoning. What I would love to see added to that is West Valley Support for the Community, the Community Renewable Energy Act. Again, I believe that we can go to one hundred percent renewable energy, but that's going to take a concerted effort, right? With the providers of the energy like Rocky Mountain Power to get there. I recently had solar power installed on my home. I drive a hybrid vehicle. I do my own composting. I've had trees planted. Not everybody can afford to put solar. A lot of these older homes, you'll find that you have to replace the roofs from the tar and gravel. You have to change the power panels. So on a home that puts in, puts in the power, that's an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. It's costing me fifty-two thousand dollars a year extra just to put solar on. So there's a lot of people, we are the largest minority majority city in the state. We're the second largest city by population in the state. So it behooves us to take the lead on this particular issue, right? And to continue to say we will support, you know, this, this coalition to be one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. And I'd love to see that on the webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. We have speaker two.
I didn't get my name called out by them here. That's all right. I'm good with speaker two. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, guys, talked about, I'm going to talk about this with you guys now, and then I won't have to come up later. The development and that the public hearing is his option C. I had written it down, had the note down there, and it was good to hear three or four of you guys talking about that. Hopefully you consider that that's where the park is there, but the HOA pays for it. Right now, parking rec is so overwhelmed with trying to man our parks and getting somebody into them daily. And with the hiring and stuff to take on another park, I don't know if they can do it. So that, that's what I have on that. My hometown had a recital last Friday night. And what it was, was they offer piano, ukulele, and guitar lessons. These were, this was their graduation, and it was the cutest thing they had at six, seven, and eight. And they had about, the first one had over thirty, then it was twenty and twenty. To see these, not just kids. We had an eighty-seven-year-old, a couple forty, some odds, some thirties. Councilman Hune was there with his family, had his two kids there that went through classes. It's good to see the, the community resource center being used this way, and people are learning something. And the money that the city is giving, and then they're bringing it from the outside, is not being wasted in any form, and it's just getting better and better. My hometown project is the greatest thing that, that ever happened. And the other thing is the speed on forty-one, they are doing enforcement. The other night I was on my way home about nine o'clock, I noticed two police cars tucked away in the driveway, all blacked out. I caught them on the side there looking for the cars going down. So they are out there, but there, some of them have moved over thirty-five hundred, and they're doing over on thirty-five, they're racing. Now to the negative, and I'm one, I like our parking enforcement guys, I have a good rapport with them. But more semis on the street, now there's four in my general area that are out there on the street. One, it's there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Everything, they could ticket it every single night. You know, if the guy wants to pay a twenty-eight dollar ticket, that's four hundred and some odd dollars to the city every month. I think if he got ticketed every single night, eventually he's going to not park on the street. Abandoned trailers, and what I mean by abandoned trailers, they're, they're owned by somebody, but they're parked on the street and they're not attached to a vehicle. There's a lot of those throughout the city. We need to be enforcing that too, because it becomes a danger, especially where there's kids around, kids like to play on that kind of stuff. And I was wondering when I was a kid, I saw something like that. We need to be ticketing, we as a city need to be ticketing those vehicles also. And one thing I noticed where they're building the new junior high school, a lot of those big trucks are parked out on the street overnight. And it's, we don't allow, you know, that to be done in the city. The city should at least let them know, they've got all that land, park your trucks, you know, in the parking lots. So that's all I have tonight. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Speaker three.
Mike Markham. Just a quick question, and somebody can answer it for me maybe, or if Lane is listening somewhere up there. What is the date for the moratorium, or whatever we want to call it, on taking care of your lawn and weeds? I know from October to something, we can't complain about unmaintained yards. We can only complain about maintained yards from the summertime or something, even though we have some really nasty yards that can show up year round. But I've been told that we can only, there's a certain timeframe during the summer that we can complain about yards, and I don't know what that is. So that's why I say if maybe Lane was listening, then he could chime in and, and tell us, but I'm not quite sure what those moratorium dates are. Because we need to start getting a couple of the nine vehicles out of the parking lot with, that's labeled code enforcement, and get them out working and brightening up some of these places. I think we'd just take a sticker on the door or something like that, but I understand we don't do that anymore. You have to go back and send them a letter and do all kinds of stuff, which slows it all down. But if we could come up with just a sticker to put on, say, you know, West Valley City, you know, you need to mow your lawn, shorten the weeds. Anything over six inches is not allowed. And when you start getting morning glory that's to the top of a three or a four-foot fence, that's longer than six inches. So, but I appreciate it if somebody could find out, let me know, whatever. So, thanks.
Thank you. So are you here for the public hearing, though? Yes. So I'll let you wait. All right, we have one person online, if you want to queue them up. Alan Nauman, you should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad I can participate remotely. I'm in Monticello, working on a solar job, and I'm so glad to be able to still participate. May, of course, is the deadline for the Community Renewable Energy Agency. And I really am not convinced that our city has taken a very serious look at this opportunity. We still don't have a meaningful staff report about the costs and benefits of the benefits of both sides of the argument. And we don't have a, an extensive survey for all our residents. This would affect every resident in the city and every business. And if you ask them, do they want to go a hundred percent renewable energy? Statistics say two-thirds of them will say yes. So that is, what I'm asking you to do is, is pony up a few thousand dollars to participate in the negotiation with Rocky Mountain Power. With other jurisdictions, you won't be by yourself. And if you do pony up that money, I believe that we can raise the balance of the second half for the second year privately. Several people have said that they would be glad to work on the project like that. So if money, please don't let money be a consideration. This is pennies compared to eighty million dollars worth of revenue that Rocky Mountain Power gets from every consumer and every resident and every business in West Valley City. This is a good ticket for us, and I hope you will, there's no date. My concern is there's no date on the agenda in the month of May. The deadline is the month of May. And so please, let's put this on the agenda and make a good decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else in the audience that didn't have a chance to sign up that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. And I felt to mention that Mr. Pyle is joining us via Zoom. So, Mr. Pyle, did you have any comments?
No, I didn't, Mayor. Thank you.
Any of the council have comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our public hearing, which is for application Z two, twenty twenty-two. And I'll turn the time to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. We have two action items to consider associated with the public hearing tonight. Both of them are associated with application Z dash two dash twenty twenty-two filed by Randy Moore of Moore Homes. And the location is forty-five ninety south and fifty-six hundred west. And comprises just under eleven acres, and the application is for zone change from A or agricultural to R M or multiple unit dwelling and R one-ten. The concept plan includes an eighty-six unit proposal. These would be two-story townhomes, as well as possibly some single-family homes and a city park. And we have seen proposals on this in the past, and with that, Mayor, I'll turn the time back to you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the council before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing for application Z two, twenty twenty-two. Anyone here wishing to speak? Sure.
Mayor Lang and council members, good evening. I'm Randy Moore, applicant, developer of this project. Worked a number of months on this project with the staff. We've probably done twenty conceptual layouts of this, trying to get closer and closer to a project that works for us, for the neighbors, for the city. And to have a high-quality project, that really has been my goal in having a high-quality, lower-density townhome development. We were close to making an application about the end of the year, and then we went back to a different architect and changed architecturally in the plans to come up with some plans that I believe are very nice, high-quality. Have very good architecture, they're larger floor plans, very nice townhome units. We then were close to application, and then this body made a change to have guest parking requirements, point seven-five per unit. And we went back to our concept and added about sixty guest parking stalls in the development, which is a lot. And I see the need for and understand guest parking. We, we removed a number of units that we had in the development to accommodate that. We then, as of late, had the council again talk about wanting to see public roads in the development. I actually like the idea of the public roads. I really do. I think that it would have the ability of the homeowners to front on the public road, to have maintenance from, from the city that's easier to accommodate. Street lighting that possibly would not be there. And so we accommodated the public roads and made some design changes. Also, way back at the beginning, we had set up and had a meeting with the neighbors. One of our neighbors, Pam Bryson, was instrumental in, in setting up a meeting that we had down at the Hunter Library. We had a number of neighbors that came to that meeting and expressed their concerns in comparison to the other application. One of their biggest concerns, major concerns were how close the units would be to their property. We've moved that to a minimum of twenty feet away from the existing homes. The height of the units, the other application had, I believe, three stories. We've gone to a two-story unit with a basement. The other application did not have a basement. So we, we made some changes to accommodate that. Our density in comparison to the other application that D R Horton had made some time ago. Our overall density is about eight-point-three to nine units per acre, depending on which of the two designs. The application that D R Horton had was about twelve units per acre, which is very close to what a normal townhome development would be. So really, our density is about, about thirty percent less than what theirs was, and about thirty percent less than what you would see on most townhome developments up and down the Wasatch Front. Really, in comparison, it's interesting, the existing subdivision to the north, those lots at the time that was developed are R one-seven lots, and probably have a density somewhere around, I would say roughly six units per acre. And so this isn't dramatically, it's, you know, a little higher than that, but the density of those lots is still higher than what you would see in, in a larger lot development. We had the proposal of looking at, maybe trying to accommodate a city-owned park off of the cul-de-sac. We made that design, then in working with staff, we'd kind of gone back and forth with that. And the last request from staff was that we make the two concepts that I believe you have. One has the city park, one has what we originally were looking at, which was for single-family lots on the existing stub road. One of the big issues that we had with the neighbors was they did not want that stub road connected for traffic. They wanted to have that, if possible, not connected back through the development. And we've accommodated that with this design. There was, I think, a question as to, in the design, we have a street that goes to the south, that kind of dead ends there, an access street. There's an existing Dominion Gas place there that we have to have access, and it can't come back to fifty-six hundred. We're proposing a solid fence, a solid wall on fifty-six hundred west with a, with a landscaped or a strip behind the sidewalks. We'll have a solid wall there, and then on the other sides would be a vinyl fence on the other boundaries of the development. One question is traffic. We have had, we had a meeting with U dot, fifty-six hundred west is a U dot road. It's really going to be controlled by them. We have had one meeting with them. Our original design, we had two streets coming out. They told us they did not want two streets, they wanted one, and they also wanted, if, if at all possible, to line up with the existing driveway on the other side of fifty-six hundred west. So we've done that, we've accommodated that. We'll have to, if you approve this, we'll have to continue to work with U dot. There's also an existing storm drain line for U dot across the property. It'll have to be, we'll have to relocate. So we'll work with U dot. I don't know the exact numbers, but my guess is that the traffic through that area has decreased substantially with the opening of Mountain View. So with the number of units there, I don't see traffic as an issue. If U dot has issues with it, they'll probably come back and require us to put a median or something to where cars will have to do a right turn out. I think in closing, I think when you look at this parcel of property, it's a unique piece. It has, it's, it fronts on fifty-six hundred west, really probably one of the busier, if not busiest, roads in the city. It has a railroad track on the south side. It has commercial across the street. It has storage units on the south side. You just build a seven-eleven next to this property on the south side. There'll be something else, commercial or manufacturing, coming in on, on the other side of the tracks. It's sandwiched between fifty-six hundred west and Mountain View kept corridor. And Mountain View kept corridor. So when you look at the parcel, you think, what is the best use for this parcel, could it be RE zone? Possibly, I think RE is more appropriate for, you know, a piece that's a little more secluded. Doesn't have so much frontage, we're going to be putting a wall out on fifty six, I don't know whether that'd be a requirement with RE. But there's many other uses, it could be commercial, so it's across the street. It could be storage units, it could be manufacturing, it could be another car lot, there's a car lot, it's just south as we all know. In the newspaper agency building, it could be medical. There could be heavier uses for this property, it would be appropriate for that, depending on your view, and so we look at this development as a. High quality. Lower end of townhome density as being very appropriate for this property, and we also see it as. Our townhomes would sell and we would estimate the value of those, we've also proposed that we will. The, the townhomes will be, I believe, in the sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred above grade finished. They will have a basement, we have agreed to finish the basements, so we will finish all levels, we found in other developments that to have. Homeowners come back and finish their basements is difficult, and we almost find that, you know, with the value of selling the home that it. Works better, so we have committed to finish the basements. And we'll do that, that, that'll be completed, so these are, in my opinion, high quality units that value wise will. Would probably exceed in sales price what the majority of the surrounding homes would sell for. So we don't feel that in any way it's diminishing from the value of, of, of any existing properties. It's, it's interesting, if you look at the statistics, townhomes are very popular. If you look in the state of Utah, I think about forty, forty to forty five percent of all building permits are townhomes, now we can. Question why, and the question may be, well, it's just value, it's a lower price, it's also lifestyle. Lot of individuals do not want to maintain the yard and are looking at something that. In terms of lifestyle, they want to see, so we would, I would, would ask for your approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you, that you may have. Both of the concepts we've approved do meet the open space requirements, whether it has the park or not, just to clarify that.
Thank you.
No question from Mr. Moore, but I didn't have a question for our staff, but I wonder. Can you put the photo up on the screens for the citizen they can see, by chance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would wish to speak to this application?
Now, I can, not a mayor, I can either remove this or keep it on, what would be your preference?
That's totally up to you.
Okay, I just come under the weather today and I don't want to share, my name's Pam Bryson, I live in the houses. North of the development. Plan here, and I want to thank. Mayor Lang and the council for listening. To us as neighbors, I, I also would like to thank the planning commission and Steve Pistorik for the many questions he answered over the phone. Over the last two years, they have been excellent, Nicole also helped quite a bit, so I appreciate that I have been heard. I think that's so important as a citizen, and I think. There's so many that don't believe they will be heard, and I, and I'm glad to see that in our city we're heard. And I encourage others who may think they won't be, that they are, because I, I felt that in this process. As far as. Me as assistant and my experience in this process, I feel like. A great deal has changed, and I am extremely grateful for that. I look back on the previous plan and I, I would not have moved my family into the, the original. Zone applicant, his community, I wouldn't have, I didn't feel like that was, you know, like a. A well-planned community, and I didn't feel like that that was. Something that would be good for adjacent to our neighborhood, I just didn't feel like it was connecting well, but this is something I would be more comfortable moving in and moving in my family too. So I appreciate the work on the part of the developer. I am. One that believes heavily in citizens' rights, so I also appreciate the landowners and their desire to do what they would like to do and. And I, I do appreciate that we've been able to kind of come to, you know, a variety of discussions and agreements on. Different things, I often represent, like, when I come up here to speak, I talk a lot for. Probably people that should come but don't always come, but they ask me questions and they post online and they don't show up, so I feel like. Maybe it's important to speak their voice sometimes too, there's still some residents that are concerned about traffic. Usana is a regular problem, but sometimes it is, with our new hospital coming. I feel like that will increase our, they and, you know, other residents feel like that will increase, increase traffic, so I just want to bring the concern forward. And we. I just wonder how they're going to construct that road to make it work for all involved. Some have expressed a desire for a larger barrier between the north and the development, something a little bit more private. I know that that's not really something that has been put into the agreement, but I just thought that would be important to share what some of the citizens have expressed. And I, um, I know that this process ends here, I understand that when the zoning changes. I don't have as much of a voice anymore, but I understand that you understand these agreements better than I do, so I would just ask that as you have read them. And you know the wording better than I do, I, you know, may have been a history teacher, but I'm not as. Expertise as you are in the city planning to know for sure, I, I just would like to know that as you vote. That you see wording in there that ensures that we will have the fair. Like that it really does in the wording, say stuff that would protect our, say the words that would protect our twenty feet from their, their buildings. That the wording ensures that, that there is enough proper drainage that we won't have floods into our yards, you know, things like that. That we are protected as neighborhood citizens, I think most of us are pretty willing to. Let a citizen have their rights while we, our rights are protected as well, and so I just ask that since you are more expertise than I. That you vote based on what you see in the wording and that it protects us as citizens that already exist there. There's a lot of great things about the development, so I think he's done a good job of expressing them, so I'm not going to, you know, jump into that, but. I do want to tell you, I entered this process about two years ago, I've been involved in other city councils and found success. But I was really unsure. Is that a timer? I was really unsure if our voices would be heard. I was told by many people that it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a darn difference even within our city, and I got discouraged, but I didn't stop. I entered the process while I was suffering from gallbladder attacks and surgeries and it was, it was a mess, but I canvassed the neighborhood anyway. And sometimes in pain, and when I found out this meeting would only be on Zoom, two years ago, I was like, oh, well, we're shot because. City council won't listen to what, what I have to say on a computer, there's no way, and. And I did hear my voice being heard and I appreciate that, so I want you to know however you vote, that I am grateful for the process. And I'm grateful for what it's done to improve. The, the application, and I know that that's a big part of the success of a city between its council and its citizens and. That is all I have to say, thank you mayor and, and city council.
Thank you, is there anyone else that would wish to speak?
Daryl Curtis, thirty eight sixty South Marcia Drive in West Valley, there's a couple of things that I, I would like to make sure that. My voice, and it is a concern with the, the traffic, you know, with eighty six townhomes, you're talking about a hundred and seventy two cars. Extra cars that are going to go out on fifty six west, yeah, at times it's not very crowded, but at other times it is very crowded. And people are cutting over to, to cut onto Mountain View, the other thing is, is to, is that. When they, when these developments are announced, I know that there is a requirement that you notify people within, I think, three hundred feet. Or something like that, and that is, that's very nice and very comforting, but three hundred feet is nothing. When you compare to how it's going to impact your community, for example, when the, the big complex of, of townhomes and. Is going in on fifty six west and thirty fifth south, no one knew anything about it from my area, and we go by that area every day. Going to work or, or whatever, so, so for us, it was just kind of a shock to see everything happen. And yeah, we're, we're about probably a half a mile to three, four quarters of a mile away from that. But if you could expand the area of influence from three hundred feet to letting people that are further away have an impact. I think you would have a better turnout and better voice of the people that are concerned about what's going on. I am concerned about townhomes just because it's townhomes, I don't, I really haven't counted the number of townhomes that are going in on thirty fifth and fifty six. But that's a, a pretty big development right there. And I've, I've heard other people say that, do we need more townhomes, do we need more apartments, I understand that there's a housing shortage. My son bought a house in, in Kearns for four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, used home, you know, it's probably built in the seventies. And these homes, even though it's a townhome, it's going to cost probably as much or more. So a townhome isn't saving anyone, any money as far as it's, it is portmanteau of a luxury, I guess, if you want to. Not have a, a yard and have to maintain that, but still, it's nice to have single family homes, it really is. I see in the plan that there's a possible two or three single family home off of that cul-de-sac. But other than that, it's, it's all high density, I, I am grateful that it's not another apartment complex. That is really great, however, townhomes can be turned into rental units, behind Smith's on fifty six west. All those townhomes there are. Not owned by anybody, and they are two townhomes per unit, and there's probably about thirty or forty units right there. And none of them are owned by the residents that live there, we, in our neighborhood, because that's, that's right there by, by us, we call it crack alley. There's a lot of crime, there's a lot of other things that go on there, so just a word of, of wisdom, you know, I know that there's no control over who owns these things. But it, it is better if we can have single family homes and, and having those people that live there take care of them. They have a vested interest in it, townhomes will be bought up by, by developers and people that want to rent them out. So I can guarantee that, you know, out of the eighty six, probably a good ten percent of them will probably be at least purchased for that, for that purpose, so. But I applaud that the city has worked with the developer, I'm grateful that the developer has changed their plans and modified that to. To reduce the number of, of townhomes and have worked with the community, that is wonderful. It, it's just a concern just with the more traffic and more just of the. Townhomes, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and I'll turn it to the council for our two action items.
Are you going to make a comment and then I can make a motion right after my comment? Just want to say thank you for all of you. Developer, Randy Moore and also citizens here. Coming tonight and. Express your concerns and also Randy Moore is to try to explain to us it is a feasible place to have a. Townhomes there, I, I agree with him about, it's a unique place right there, the location is very unique. The north side of the. Of this property is houses, the east side is a commercial, the south side is stores. And maybe going to be in the west side, going industrial area. And, you know, right now, you basically you go everywhere, you see the town, townhomes or condos. I wouldn't blame on them, the reason is because. The land increased enormously, just in a short period of time. Another lifestyle value, but also the land is to cost so much money for right now, if you were them, you would do the same thing. But as the, a council member, I'm one of the council members here in this, this city. And to the, the speaker number one right there, I forgot her name, I think Pam, I believe. She spread her concern about trying to protect the citizens in this city. And that we, we are trying to do, we are looking for, not only for today, but also maybe fifty years from now. How can affect our city and affect that corner, affect that area. Also, Daryl Curtis here bringing up about the concerns of the traffic, and I agree with him about the traffic, it's going to be. A lot of problem in that fifty six hundred west. We run out of land here in our city, I believe it's about five percent in, in our city right now to do something with the land here in our city. So I prefer to see something as. Maybe houses in that corner, or maybe something is a gift for the future in our city. And with my comments, I want to let you know, a motion is to deny this. Ordinance twenty two dash seventeen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Ms. Kimmich.
Well, can we have a discussion?
You're right, we should, sorry about that, anybody else want to chime in?
I think that I, I agree that this is a challenging location and. And. And I think there is a need for, for townhomes and that this location is an appropriate place, so. I, I don't think we should deny this, I think that the developer has. Has negotiated in good faith with us and. And that this is going to be a great product and a, a good addition to our city.
Thank you, anyone else?
I would add that I, I think that there is a. Has been and still is a theme of considering the specialness or the specialty of. Proposals as they come in, anytime that we consider a zone change. Definitely looking back and comparing this to the previous applicants, I'm very happy to see the changes that have been made here. As well as some that have been brought up by residents that. Should this pass, should definitely stay in develop agreement. And so I. Agree that this is a strange situation or a challenging plot here, but. I would actually be in favor of approving the ordinance.
Anyone else? I'll just have my comment, but. Pretty much everybody knows, I don't like high density and I do think there's other things better suited for this, so. There we go from that, okay, anybody else want to comment?
I agree, I think. RE or something more like that is, is appropriate for these larger parcels that we have so few of.
Good point. Okay, are we ready now? We'll turn it to Ms., oh, were you going forward to speak, okay, Ms. Kimmich.
The motion is for denial. Councilman, Councilman Petis Manu?
No.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Hi.
Councilman Christensen?
No.
Councilman Northwell?
No.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this item until next week. I'd like to make a motion that we continue, uh, this item until next week. Because, uh, it seems that we're at a impasse with three to three and, and we're missing one council member and, and we should hear from him and and consider this next week when we have all of us. President, are all of us planning to be here next week?
Well, it'll actually be two weeks before our next regular meeting.
Right.
But I, do you have anybody being absent on that day? That you know of?
Councilman Christensen was a maybe, I believe, for the two weeks.
So, so maybe give them a month.
All right. So the motion is to continue for two weeks?
Yes, I accept that amendment.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, we have any comments on that motion?
I think we okay with that.
So just for clarification, for the record, we're continuing to May twenty-fourth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's both action items on this application.
Ms. Kimmick?
Councilman Petis Manu?
Hi.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Hi.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
And can we have the same motion on twenty, well, if you desire, twenty-two seventy-two?
Um, I think that was
Right?
The, the continuance covered both.
That's how I understood it.
Okay, you're good with them both?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will continue that until May twenty-fourth. All right, we'll now move on to our ordinances. We have ordinance twenty-two dash twenty. I will turn the time to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This ordinance would change the city's consolidated fee schedule for some various parks and recreation fees. Uh, the city's fee schedule covers a large, uh, or a broad range of fees that are associated with, uh, various costs and revenues that come into the city, which the council by ordinance has um, authority over and, um, uh, basically because of their relation to policymaking decisions, uh, exercises that as they see fit. However, there are also a lot of costs, fees, uh, minor type of, uh, or what could be viewed as minor types of transactions that may, that they may not necessarily want to see um, or need to see, uh, according to their desire based in that fee schedule. And this ordinance is proposing changing some of those to put them under the regular authority of the city manager's office to um, make changes in them. I'm gonna list those real quickly. There's eleven of them and they consist of fees from three different departments, the Family Fitness Center, the Golf Courses and the Utah Cultural Celebration Center. And the eleven, uh, fees are, under the Family Fitness Center, childcare fees, kid camp, kids camp program fees, kindergarten camp fees and after-school camp fees. And in the golf courses, it's green fees, cart fees, club rental fees, driving range ball bucket fees, tournament fees and player pass fees. And then at the cultural center, it is for rental fees. And, uh, with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. I will now turn it to the council for comments or a motion.
Uh, my question is, is, uh, to, to pile for, for this, uh, ordinance, uh, twenty-two dash twenty. So the, uh, council members, we are very much in the past, uh, to this point, we have been making decision regarding this matters?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. And, uh, I would like to have that kind of continuity um, to do that because we are policymakers. So we try to, to do something, we send it to the CDR and then city managers can do something with the, uh, uh, policy. And with that, uh, uh, with that comment, I make a motion to deny this ordinance twenty-two dash twenty. So I want to keep it the way we've been doing in the past up to this point.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the item?
I think we should approve this, this ordinance, uh, because it gives, it gives our staff more flexibility to respond when, uh, when their costs are, are changing and, and, uh, and to make these, these small changes without having to go through the big process with the city council.
Uh, I think that reason why we're just sitting right here. Yeah. We, if we uh, we want to make a change, then we can, if they want to make a change, they can submit it to us and we can take a look at it and then we can make the decision. That's why the people default us to stay right here, what we're sitting.
My feeling is that this is a administrative item, not a legislative item. And so it's perfectly, um, acceptable to me for the city manager to work with those fees.
I can empathize with the principle that it feels like we're giving up some kind of a power, uh, or bypassing a consultation phase, but I don't think that we've ever discussed fifty cents or a dollar on a kids camp fee in a legislative setting before. So I'm also okay with this being considered an administrative task.
You know, I personally think is the one cent is the one cent, one dollar is the one dollar. Even the kids fees or adults or, uh, restaurant. We all, we all need to take a, a good look at those before we make decisions.
Yeah, if we, if we don't look at it, who do, who do the citizens have to, to talk to about their fees? They don't, you know, they don't have any elected, elected official that they can talk to and say, how come my fees went up? So I think I think it is within our purview to, to review, just like we did a couple, a month ago with the Family Fitness Center fees. That wasn't a big deal. I mean, we spent some time in study session and we had a vote and if, if Parks and Rec want to increase fees, we could have similar action made. So I, I would like to keep it under our review and, um, give the citizens somebody they can, they can they can vote me out if they don't like it.
Well, you know, even if we give the city manager the authorization on these fees, it wouldn't have changed anything that we did a couple of months ago. Those fees are still decided by the council. If, if a resident is, is not satisfied with these fees that our city manager controls, we can still, uh, if four of us say to the city manager, hey, those fees that you changed are too high, you need to, to make those lower than, than he has to do that still. So I don't think that, uh, I don't think we're taking away our own responsibility. I mean, we're responsible for a lot of things that, that the city manager makes decisions on. And, uh, but, but we don't have to have a voice in every little decision that is made.
I, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm agree with you what you're just saying. But at the same time, we represent the citizen here, their voice, no matter how small, how big, but we have to represent them, their voice, therefore they rely on us. They trust us, they come here and they ask us for help. And if we turn it to someone else, where are they gonna look in for? They have to fight someone else. And then we, the person represent them. We cannot do something like that for them. And they turn around, they go to look someone else. They're not representing them. They're just working for the city. It does not make sense. Is that clear?
I think Lars just made my decision in the fact that if we don't agree with the city manager's dis- decision, that it's a harder process than just letting it go through the council as normal and having those discussions in city or in study session and then making the adjustments if we have concerns. So okay. Any other comments? All right, Ms. Kimmick?
Motion is for denial. Councilman Petis Manu?
Hi, excuse me, hi.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Oh. So, sorry, because it, it's too long for debate and talking. So what is this? Yes for what and no for what?
Yes, for denial.
Okay. I
Councilman Christensen?
No.
Councilman Nordville?
No.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. Having no other need for a closed session or any other items, our last item is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 And we are adjourned. Thank you so